I'm opening up, the meeting is six thirty-one. Can we just roll call and start and end up with Cat?
Catlin Brown, Curriculum Director.
Adrian Alford, Assistant Principal.
Jocelyn Young, Principal.
Nate Byrne, Director of Student Services.
Scott Runing, Superintendent.
Shane Wells, Acting Chair.
Amy Hanniven, School Board.
Dave Ruth, School Board.
Alright, and bills that manifested are going around. Agenda adjustments, we don't have to do that. We'll go move to non-public after opening public comment. If you want, just hold on to your mic.
You can hold the mic, as long as you have the mic.
Here, he's coming over to turn it on for you.
I'm Janice Cawthall, and I'm a member of the Northwood Garden Club, which must have seen our work when we came in the door tonight. We have a big crew here on Sunglass Sunday, did a lot of work, as you can see. We have had Docos reach out to us, they're donating mulch and stone to finish up. We had a fellow here this week that did the area by the kindergarten door. So, my request to the school board is we have to purchase some garden stakes and fabric to put down for weed protection, and I have a crew coming back on Sunday morning to spread the mulch and the stone. So, the cost for the garden stakes and the fabric was eighty-eight ninety-seven. And with the mulch being donated and the stone being donated, it saved us about five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, and also, Kavereta Gardens has also reached out, they're offering some annual to put some color into the area a little bit. So, we're all very proud of it.
Yeah, it looks so good.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Thank you.
Alright.
Make a motion to discuss that now instead of later on?
Yeah, okay.
Then I'll make a motion, we donate a hundred dollars to the, for the garden out front. It's an eighty-eight, let them buy coffee.
To the Northwood Garden Club for supplies.
Okay, fine, to the Northwood Garden Club.
Okay, any discussion?
No, and I know that they were talking about three or four hundred bucks for box mulch and stuff to finish, which I would like, if you're doing all this for free, then it'd be great. And we've done that in the past, it's always been different.
So, we're just gonna take the maintenance line?
Well, we'll find a line to take it out, and when we go into non-public, I'll walk this fine lady out and get the information on where to send that.
Yeah, something I would do.
Yeah. We're gonna do it, I think they just voted to do it as a donation, so we don't need that. But I'll walk you out.
Did we have a vote? No, we didn't have a vote, we have a motion and a second. Alright, then we have a vote.
All in favor? Alright, three nothing that we will donate.
That's cheap.
Yeah.
Alright, so, we are gonna go into non-public at this moment. Can I get a motion to go into non-public, please?
For what reason?
RSA ninety-three A, Jesus, Scott, I need you. It's on the personnel and security, so I think it's fifteen.
RSA ninety-one A, two C. Reputation of a person, and then security could be probably anything. Acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property.
I think it's I.
Pretty sure it's I, it's considered a management. Yes, I.
I?
Yeah. I and C, make a motion, RSA ninety-one, C and I.
Second. Okay, roll call in.
Yes, Dave.
Yes, Amy.
And Shane Wells, yes. Alright, we are now in non-public. Alright, so, moving on.
Make a motion to approve the school board minutes of seven twenty-six eighteen, public. And then, separate motion for non-public.
We don't have a.
Wait a minute. I don't think you want to approve these, because they just were done today. So, remember, you didn't have a secretary last week, so you don't have any minutes in your packet. My recommendation to the board is to take these minutes and review them, and I'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting for you to approve.
Oh, is he coming today?
Nope. Brian?
No.
He's away. Alright, so.
Serious, we don't have to bring this back.
Personnel report, we didn't have any personnel reports, right? Be sure there's nothing here.
No, I did it all.
Yep, in the public. Okay, student service report, first meeting of the month.
Oh, I can do it, I'll do it right after I fold it.
Alright.
Okay, for my student service report, you have it in there. What I wanted to share with you is that, at this point, the ASY program has ended, as of today, and as far as I know, there have been no hiccups. It went really smoothly, it started off well and continued to go through, all the way through, and it was set at, to end today, and did, and went well. IDA allocations have come in, and I started the grant, I have been able to consolidate and spend out all of the sixteen seventeen funds, so that we did not lose anything, and as the grants start closing out and I'm able to finish them, I'll make sure that I supply you with some of those informations of what's going on with that. Debbie Lee has worked really hard on setting up the special ed transportation runs for SY eighteen nineteen, those are going really well. We're not quite done with those yet, but they're along the line. Mrs. Lavalley and I have attended various different professional development opportunities, one of which was an MSB training that took place over the summer, and at that training, they shared with us that they were gonna be lowering their rates from nine percent on Medicaid to Schools Act of what they charge us, to eight percent. So, they're lowering that rate, which gives us money back, that helps, that saves us some costs there. I attended a Rural Education Leaders Network Conference on college and career readiness up north in Plymouth, that was really good networking to see what they do and how some of the schools try to get students to get more involved at the high school level and keep them engaged in their communities. And then, Mr. Runing joined Jill and I at the Summer Academy for the New Hampshire Association of Special Ed Administrators, which they updated us on some of the new school laws, they shared with us on the importance of mental health and what we need to do for ourselves as well, not just for the students, but the employees, and what would be beneficial. And Jill stayed an extra day because it dealt solely with preschool and what to do with preschool stuff, and she's gonna be sharing some of that information with us next week. Today was a pretty busy day getting ready for everything, so we didn't go over that information at this point. And that's pretty much where we're at with student services. Do you have any additional questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Dave?
No, you're just also, you'll be starting planning now for preschool, and that numbers look alright there?
Yes.
Preschool and stuff, so.
Jill's keeping on top of those. Right now, I will say, I did share this at the joint board, there are still some openings for three-year-olds. Currently, our four-year-olds are completely full, and there's a waiting list for that, but our three-year-olds do have, for typical students, we do have some.
You say it's an open, you're looking.
We're looking for three-year-old typical students to fill in some slots, but our four-
But not a person who the state would require to be there, you're looking for somebody with a typical student, so there's a.
Role models.
Role model, into. Okay.
And we did post that in several different places that we're looking, so people know.
Thank you.
Alright, move on to.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I shouldn't have used so many acronyms, I needed to write it off for the reporter.
Alright, Principles Report, on page five.
Good evening. So, I'll echo Mr. Byrne, most of our summer programs ended today and ended well. Yesterday, our STEM students went out and launched rockets in the back fields, which was pretty cool. So, overall, it was a successful summer. Our next students are here for two more weeks. We have been busy planning for the beginning of school and doing some last-minute hiring. When we start school, in about three and a half weeks, we'll have an orientation for new staff on that Monday, the twenty-seventh, and then on Tuesday and Wednesday, we have two days of professional development. Tuesday, we'll start the day with a welcome-back breakfast provided by the very generous PTA. We'll do some warm-up activities, help people connect and reconnect after summer. The building leadership team will work with us to do an interactive presentation to sort of set the stage for the school year, and then we'll be talking with the Universal team and Jill Heath on a two-hour presentation on our school-wide role of positive behavior interventions and supports. And then, the remainder of that day, we'll have lunch, and then the remainder of that day is, will be for teachers and professional staff, the three hours of contractual preparation time, and then paraprofessionals will receive training on things like Medicaid, they'll have time to meet with special ed case managers, they'll have time to review IAPs. On Wednesday, we have a couple different trainings. Chief Droule will be here at eight o'clock on that Wednesday morning to train everybody on CRAZE, which is an acronym for civilian response to active shooter events. And then, following that, we will have Stephanie Arroyo, who's the parent of a sixth grader and also works for the Granite State Children's Alliance, she'll be providing information to staff on information around mandated reporting, signs of child abuse, what reports entail and what happens after they're made. And then, that afternoon, we will do our required review of policies, procedures, and then we'll end the day with some team time and breakout sessions. One thing for the board's input is, the board has historically provided two-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards lunch for the first day of school. Adrian and I go and buy it and get reimbursed from the school board expense line, so that's something to think about if you would like to continue.
We'll make a motion.
I've done it different ways at different times.
We've done it in the past, you're just.
I mean, you do it every year, but sometimes you just say go ahead, sometimes you guys do it.
The school board account.
It's a donation, so I'd say, go ahead.
Okay.
We have to vote on it. Spend the money, they have to vote on it.
Again, that's really, you can do it by motion and vote, you can just say go ahead.
Alright, that's fine, we're all set.
Up to you.
Take your advice.
We're gonna do it either way, no.
Take my money.
Then we have a couple of fundraising requests. The Friends of Northwood Recreation has asked to have a table at open house and to be able to sell scarecrow heads and frames. This money would go towards their effort to raise money for a town playground.
Could I ask what the date is again on that open house?
Right now, we're tentatively looking at September eighteenth.
And are you doing what you have done in the past, is have an open house at the school and then we'll have cookouts out back, or?
You're cooking.
Okay. As long as it's burnt hot dogs, I can do it.
Hot dogs, hamburgers.
So, lots of organizations from town have tables and do some networking and advertising where they're asking to sell something, that's why they're looking for, or why I'm asking for board approval for that. And then, the PTA would like to run its annual Yankee Candle fundraiser from October through November, and that, or to November, and that is to raise money to fund activities in the school. We are looking for board approval for those two items.
I'll make a motion to approve the open house request.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the PTA request.
That's Yankee Candle fundraiser? Second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
That is all we have for you.
Thank you very much. Curriculum Director's Report.
Point of order, just, no, just for the PTA, just so they know, that's funds for the PTA, not for a school, right?
Right, right, the PTA uses those funds to support the school.
I just want that for the public to know that it's PTA's money.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's to pay for the lunch. Alright, moving on, Curriculum Director's Report.
Good evening. I've updated the curriculum documents for both K through eight ELA and K through eight Mathematics, including a seventh grade pre-algebra and eighth grade Algebra I course. All the documents have been posted online, so that way, teachers and parents can access them to see what their children will be studying. Most of the documents include an instructional timeline that will help teachers plan their instruction. The only exception to that is kindergarten ELA, because each of the units for ELA, English Language Arts, for kindergarteners, is about three weeks long. So, if the kindergarten teachers want to spend a little bit more time on certain concepts, it makes sense for them to make that decision. And I participated in the school's Building Leadership Retreat, which will be helpful for me in terms of collaborating with Mr. Alford and Ms. Young, along with other teacher leaders, so that way we can move the school forward. And I also attended the Design Studios Workshop on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, which will also help, help us implement different performance assessments, and different ways to assess student learning, aside from traditional paper and pencil tests.
On that, because it says they engage to protect the conversations about teaching and learning, both with other educators and other districts. Have we sat, have you sat down with Co-Brown?
When's the last time you sat down with Co-Brown, to kind of align our curriculum with their?
So, I've been looking at the curriculum frameworks and making sure that what we're doing is one-hundred percent aligned to the curriculum frameworks, because if we do that, then the students will be prepared for Co-Brown.
Who's your point of contact, do they, is Co-Brown the curriculum director, or they just have the?
They have different curriculum people.
Different curriculum, they have multiple.
Right, so they don't have Bridges meetings during the summer?
Okay.
But I think Cat's involved in the Bridges conversations.
Yep.
And of course, we like to have those conversations on the, this is my little plug for Please Don't Take the March Day Away. That March PD Day, that we have a tendency to cancel due to snow days and making up time, is really the only extended block where we have a day with all the staff together to have the Bridges conversations in the afternoons, and so when we, when we don't do that day, it sets us back a little bit, so.
Could I ask you just to speak a little louder, because I'm sure Shane can, but I got the fan and everything else, I can't.
Yeah.
Be good, thank you.
Are the speakers working?
Those don't work, those aren't speakers, those are just for the.
We bought speakers.
You did? Ooh, good.
Can you turn them up?
Am I coming out of there?
Oh, no, because usually I can hear it echo.
That I can hear.
Can you hear that? Oh, no, we don't do that. How's that, that's good.
Okay.
So. As far as interacting with Co-Brown and the vertical alignment, you know, the horizontal, the vertical alignment, sorry, of the curriculum, Cat does that during the Bridges conversations. One of the issues that we have is, when we have that March PD Day, the Bridges conversations happen typically in the afternoon for a period of time, and so when we lose that day, it sort of puts us behind a little bit, because that is our only day together with all three schools and Co-Brown. And we lost that this year. So, and a lot of the things what Cat's doing internally right now are aligning within the K to eight, and then you would bring and have those conversations nine, eight, K through eight, nine to twelve. Does that make sense?
Yep. Alright, is there anything else, Cat?
That is it.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody, board, have any questions?
No.
Alright, moving on to policies. Reaffirm GBEC, the drug-free workplace and drug-free school zones, and JEB, entrance into the school system. So. We're just reaffirming those, so if we get a motion right, we should be good. That'll probably change anyway, right? No.
Doing both at the same time?
Yeah, we do both, yes.
You're doing the, just announce the letters, so.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to reaffirm policies GBEC and JEB.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes three nothing. Alright, first reading, JLCF Wellness Policy, BEDB Agenda Preparation and Assimilation, and BCB, the Board Member Conflict of Interest. Always a bone of contention, but shouldn't be anymore. This is just our first reading, so.
Right, so.
First reading, I have a question.
Yep.
Page fifteen.
Yep.
Appendix one.
Yep.
Some of the items that were allowed, dry roasted peanuts, nuts, tree nuts, nuts. Do we have a policy in the school that it's a nut-free school, or is that just in the caf?
There's designated nut-free tables in the cafeteria, but there's been no nut-free bowl.
The rest of the school is fine, okay, great, thank you.
Is there still a wellness committee?
I don't think so, is it?
I'm sorry, what? Is there still a wellness committee?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to hook up with them, but it never happened. I was gonna work with Beth at some point, and then it kind of like went away.
We'd love to have you.
Really?
Sure.
Is a school board member allowed?
Yeah, actually, you're supposed to be on it.
Oh, I would like that.
Just accommodate yourself.
Alright, cool.
Yes, I will send you a meeting schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, we are done with policies. We will now jump to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Byrne?
Public Forum Update, we had Mrs. West reach out to the town to see if we could start a conversation, we haven't heard back yet, so that is the update that I have for you now. Please understand that your last board meeting was a week ago, so to turn things around and have those conversations cinched up in that period of time is not always possible. So, that's your update there. Want to go right to Financial Update?
Yes, please.
Financial Update, the business office and Ms. Young, Mr. Tom, and other people have been working hard at closing open POs and removing encumbrances. My last look is there was about twenty percent left of the original list. Ms. Young reminded me in an email that a lot of that is because we authorized a bunch of purchases at the end of the year, and we haven't received that stuff yet. Mr. O'Sullivan, we know we've pretty much closed the SAU, we've been able to pretty much close Nottingham and Strappard, and you'll be hopefully closed at the next meeting, so your last fiscal year will be closed out, and you'll know exactly what your fund balance is.
Financial, has Ryan been informed, or has he got any questions on the budget?
No, but we did get the email from the, he's been informed, he was emailed, Ms. West reached out to him the same day, she reached out to Amy to schedule some time with him. I know that he's got some vacation things going on, so I haven't heard back from him. I'm hoping that I will be able to get together with him next week, because we provided all the information. As far as I know, I generated some information to Mr. O'Sullivan to submit to the Budget Committee for their meeting next, or.
The age or something?
Week from tomorrow.
The ninth?
Yeah. And so, either that goes out tomorrow, or it's already gone out, I believe, it's already, you did some work with that, too.
I did.
So, but I do want to sit down with Mr. Winslow, because there's some nuances in that budget, like for instance, in the special ed non-public, there's a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar portion left, but then in the high school, there's a one-hundred-and-fifty thousand overspent, which cashes out, but I want to go over those little details with him and go through line by line, so I'm hoping that he gets back in touch with us and we can do that next week, so he can walk in feeling comfortable presenting for the, to the Budget Committee.
Alright, and the Budget Committee got, as you said, have had their package sent or will be sent, so.
It either has been sent or will be sent by tomorrow, I'm pretty sure it has been sent.
Right, right.
And we also let the Budget Committee know that we're in the process of closing the books, so, you know, it's, it's an interesting thing when you try to close your books in July and you haven't gotten your June electric bill yet, I mean, so you can't really close close, you can just.
No, I know it, I think they realize that, or they.
I, yeah, I think they will, but I think the close will happen earlier this year than 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 usual. But, you know, that and being down, somebody at the SAU and the Finance Department on a medical leave has created some stress in the business office, as people try to pick up that slack and get it done.
Try to pick up what?
Try to pick up the slack from somebody being out.
Oh, yeah, I know it, yeah.
And getting it done, but again, Jocelyn and Tom and, amazingly, special ed was probably done first, which usually.
Yeah, they send their bills early.
Right.
This year.
Mrs. Lee had pretty much everything dialed in in March, so then it was just straggling things that were, that were coming in. So, these guys have done a great job of pitching in and helping us get that done as quickly as possible. And then, infrastructure, that had a lot to do with school security, so I did that in non-public. Anything else? Do you want me to just go right into bus routes, or do you want to do it?
Yeah, we'll just jump into new business. We got the, everybody got that.
There's bus routes in your packet, and it was the same error that we had last week. Again, we tried to turn a packet around and out for twenty-four hours, so I passed out new elementary school bus routes to you tonight, and then the Co-Brown bus routes remain the same. And we're looking to have those approved, so we can have Ms. Dobie at Dale finalize them and get them to the school, so we can post them.
Did you decide if we have to approve the high school? It doesn't matter anyway.
We searched the minutes, so, and we couldn't find it anywhere, so I would say, yeah, why not, right?
You can approve them, it doesn't matter anyway. And the law is, you don't even have to have a bus for them anyway.
I've done some work with that law today, and that's partly accurate, but.
So, you said you passed out new elementary school ones tonight? Thank you.
They're the same as last time.
Oh, okay. I just left them on the card.
The ones in your packet just had the one-page error.
We were missing two buses.
Okay.
Jocelyn had it, I got a copy.
And then the Co-Brown on the back of the one that's not correct.
Right.
I did have someone mention a stop that they think should be added. On Range Road, there's five, five kids on Sherburne, that would be, that would have to go, I think, either to Knolls or down to.
It would have to be on Sherburne or Ridge, right? Knolls or Burn Road. No, I have to go Burn.
Burn, for that.
Yeah.
It was just mentioned that there will be five kids, so they asked.
They have to be picked up on Ridge Road or Sherburne Hill Road?
It would be.
It's the corner of Range Road and Sherburne Hill Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is a.
But it's not on it?
I think that's a tough spot, too, because you come down that hill and then it.
Yeah, it's on that sharp turn.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Co-Brown kids from Strafford go speeding around.
And it was just recently paved, too, so, it's a racing, race, racing.
Still, you got a stop, you got a stop.
Range and.
Range.
And a Sherburne Hill Road.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be adjustments on some of those stops as new people are moved in and didn't know they would.
I mean, generally, she does that, and she'll be in touch with Ms. Helton, too, I think she already has been, actually, Ms. Dobie.
We have the bus routes, but we can't do anything with them till they're approved.
Right. Can you tell me which bus that is?
Oh, I'm sorry, it would be the one my kid takes, so on top of that.
It's not the first page.
Yeah, this has got all of them.
Oh, okay.
I got two oh two Sherburne Road on the red bus.
Yep, Bryant.
That's the one, red bus.
It goes Knolls way, in between Knolls and Bryant, so people on Range Road, they'll have to go either to Knolls or Bryant to get it up.
No bubble gum bus, are you afraid all the kids down here would get on that one bus?
Probably would.
Ooh, the bubble gum bus, that must be me.
They'd love it, so.
We can buy colors of construction paper that we have.
So, we could.
To give them their tickets.
We could approve these bus routes, bus routes today, so we could get them out to the parents, and then, Mr. Runing will just follow up with Mrs. Dobie, and we'll adjust them.
If you approve these routes, I will follow up with Ms. Dobie in the morning, I hope that she's at work tomorrow. And even if I have to wait till Monday, that's fine, and see if we can add that stop in between Knolls and Bryant at the junction of Range. At least ask the question, if she says yes, we can do that, then we'll just add it in. If she says no, I'll be back to you with a reason why.
Okay.
Does that work?
Alright.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I haven't, I made, I said I'll entertain a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Bus routes.
The bus routes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, which we already have. All in favor?
Yes.
That's just to be noted.
Still on new business?
Yep, we got a staff lunch.
Right.
We already did that, we already approved that. Alright, we'll jump
Couple of question, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
For a new business, I guess. In the old days, every board member had the policy book, big thick thing that we carried with us to every meeting and stuff, and we did use it, but it was a little pain. But I would recommend that we have at least one here, because we've had, and I've only been to a few meetings, and we've always got short questions. And, and/or, we should have one computer, that one person that we probably could get from in-school wouldn't cost us, that we could have one person who knows how to use it, have all the policies in there. So that when something comes up, we can, oh, let's look up policy JJB, whether, you know, we, issues arise over the year.
Yeah.
Not, not tonight, not last week, but I just think for the future, it's good to have that around with us.
We have had issues like that, and Ms. Young usually has her laptop most of the time.
Okay.
Nate has his, and then we just look it up that way.
And let me offer you a remedy. So I've just, Mrs. West has just finished a hard copy Stratford policy book, which is an incredible amount of work. And now she's about to begin working on Nottingham, and then after that, we'll be getting one for Northwood, so you have both. But you've gotta give me some time
I don't want five of them.
To make that happen, because it's
I don't even want one of them, but I think we got, I think the computer's the way to go, because it's easier to change.
I've even started bringing my laptop, so I can look them up, but I think it's good to have a hard copy, too. Now, the challenge with the hard copy is whenever we approve a policy, we're gonna wanna get a hole punch, remove the old one, and stick the new right in the meeting, or else your book's gonna quickly become outdated.
Yeah, it does. That's why I like the computer, because it can be changed a lot easier and faster, as long as we have access to it, I think we should.
We can do both.
I have a personal request for new business. Could I get a copy of the Stratford budget for eighteen nineteen and the Nottingham budget for eighteen nineteen? Because I'll be getting ours, and I like to compare and see, and we'll be doing budget season starting in September, October, so it just gives me something else to
Copies of this year's budget?
For eighteen nineteen.
For Stratford and Nottingham.
Stratford and Nottingham, and we get ours anyway. I don't know if anybody else wants them, but I found the useful to look and see what everybody does.
That's the current year that we're operating in. That's what, you want this year's budget? Okay. Those are also on the SAU website, but we can print the hard copies, too.
I, again, now on that one, I do need a hard copy, please.
Does everybody want that, or just Mr. Ruth?
I could just go on, anyway, get it.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
No, thank you.
Anybody want to bring anything up for the next
Committee report?
No, okay. Alright, committee reports. Let's start with the one I missed, facilities.
Jocelyn and Tom and I and Bob from the SAU met.
Yep.
And they kind of went over things that had been discussed, and we got the, what is it, the CIP list of projects. We discussed a few of those type of things. Bob had some comments to make about, you know, things to help us. But I guess I would have liked to have you there, just because I thought we could have a really walk around the whole school. For future goals.
Yep.
We have a lot of space in this school. My brain is going like crazy. I will say that I think we have a nec thing here that I will put on future on our list. We have downstairs where we have that, where we have the pre-K. This school was built for six hundred students, and rooms were built for thirty students, and I think if we took a walk around, my brain is thinking the SAU may need a place to rent eventually. And/or, I hear how Nottingham had been looking for a place for seventh graders or seventh and eighth graders and things, so. Plus, I had asked Tom and to make up that list, that of all the projects that have been done for the last five or ten years, because I brought up the roof, but you guys have already planned the roof for twenty twenty-five on the CIP. So I would think I'd like to schedule another meeting within a quarter. Don't have to be real soon, but, I mean, I would like to really look around with you and see what you've discussed and there are a lot of things that I think we could do to help, and we're also got another project coming here. We may have to have space to maybe do other things, move people or move offices, so, that's all. No big thing, but it's for the future.
Well, I could be outside of box thinking on that, so, yeah, we'll get together sometime. Was there anything, anything big in that you guys talked about?
No. No, because it was more of a review of what you guys had been discussing, because what I brought up was easy. You could say, hell, we already did that. Kinda like what I do when you guys bring something up, so. No, it was fine. Jocelyn, anything I do forget, so.
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
No problem.
Other committees, technology committee, that's Keith. Let's just say this, has anybody done any committees in the last thirty days?
No.
As you did, clubs committee, right?
I've been with them last week.
No.
Last week. Well, we didn't go over, we didn't do go over committees, it's the last week. Right, yeah. Brian did the committee thing last week, so. And we got the budget coming up. Hopefully Brian will get with you guys before then, and so we have no other meetings, so good. Alright, let's move on. Old business, again, board goals review. We just had a meeting last week. I think we'll just wait until Keith gets back for the next meeting, we'll go over those, if you guys, everybody's fine with those?
Okay, yeah, I have questions, but I can wait, we should
Well, I mean, if you got a question, I'd rather have the question now, so we can have, we can discuss it if we need to, next time.
Ensure the educational success of students, on page twenty-three, number two.
Yep.
We, as a board, probably still are responsible for homeschoolers, although the SAU probably checks, so I guess my question would be, what are we doing for them, or is everything fine there? Do they take the, what used to call it the, I just called it kneecap test, but the test, do they take that test? I was just, questions I have about how we have so many homeschoolers now, in my mind.
You have to remember, the homeschool laws didn't change in two thousand and ten. They used to have to file their initial homeschool request, and then they used to have to check in with us yearly to continue that request, and I think it was two thousand and ten the legislature removed that requirement. So once a student in the district is homeschooled, there is the potential to have no contact with them at all. If a parent has a problem or has a need with the assessment, we always work with them to provide access to the NWA or whatever assessment we're doing that the students can take. They can even take the state test if they elect to. They have to give us a little notice, so we can set that up. In addition to that, there's been modifications to the Home Education Act to include private school students, too. So you have curricular access rules that are governed by policy, where a homeschool student can come in and take, for instance, an art class or a PE class, or co-curricular activities. Some people think that might be a little strange, actually makes sense, because those homeschool parents are still paying taxes and paying for your school, even though they're choosing not to access it on a full-time basis. So as far as homeschooling in the state of Northwood, I would say that it's a collaborative relationship when the parent reaches out and wants resources and discussions. If the administration has any questions about law or policy, we go over and review that, and we, and we give students the access that they require. The caveat to that is, as far as special services and special education, there is a state RSA that releases the district for any liability. So those services generally aren't provided to homeschool students. However, in my experience in different places and here, is that sometimes parents will withdraw and homeschool a special education student, and there's a likelihood that that student will return. So my philosophy is if we can provide those services that are already available to other students, that we should do that, because we want that student in the best shape possible academically and other ways that they can be when they return to school. So there's some flexibility that Mr. Byrne now, in my previous position, can apply there to, to help out.
Thank you. Any other questions there? Not about our goals, no. Okay, alright, we'll move on to parking lot items.
So after the last meeting, I adjusted your parking lot, some changes?
Thank you, so what did you change?
Removed the competency presentation to March.
Yep.
Linda pulled the old quotes for the tractor and are working on new quotes, but that's still in there.
Yep. Security school.
And then moved your student representative discussion to the second meeting.
Second, okay.
Right.
Yep, and the school board newsletter, Amy?
I'm working on it.
Okay, that's, that's, that's another reason we should have a computer that she could use that for, because as we found out in the meeting last night, if she uses her home computer, and for some reason we have a write-to-know request and there's problems, she's gonna have her computer confiscated, so they can check things out, her own personal. So I'd suggest, and it was brought to our attention, I use my own, we all use our own
I think they were just talking about your email address.
Right.
Not your computer.
They're not talking about your computer.
If you send an email to him about a student, which we're not supposed to do, but we do, for some time.
Yeah.
I just think we should have
The newsletter's just gonna be something that, it's gonna be like a paragraph about what's been going on with the school board.
I hate to create problems, I'm fine. Bring it up that says
Competency second was tracked.
I know I'm crazy sometimes, but
This week is no.
Good representative.
At the next school board meeting
Happened in the past, that other school board.
Yeah.
No big, no big deal.
Dave, I know what you're talking about, yeah, there are bands, well, even if you're on your phone during a meeting, right, and someone does a write-to-know app, they could technically take your phone, too. Because you could be doing something on your phone, but it'd be very hard pressed that some of, it'd be, I don't think they would be able to get it.
I don't need
I just want to ask a few questions. Where did they can take your phone or computer come from? Where did that information
No, me. In the past, other school board, I don't have the phone, but they have taken their computers and
We were at a meeting last night.
Who are they?
If something happened and there was something with financial things.
Right, if there's a suspicion of a crime.
Yes, okay, that's better.
But access to an email, I do not believe, would cause the confiscation of your computer. It would cause you to provide those emails.
Right.
So, I think you would have to
I don't wanna
I think you would have to use your device in a crime.
And I was going to say, to avoid that, whenever you send out an email, just make sure you're using yours
That's why you guys all have school board email addresses?
So then you don't have any worry.
I don't want it.
Right.
I don't want it.
You don't want it?
No.
Oh.
I had nothing on my emails, or nothing. Unless you steal my coupon from
No.
The Texas Road Ranch there or something.
Alright, we are off the rails.
Yeah, I know, and I do that sometimes.
Alright, let's get back to parking lot items.
Alright.
I think we discussed everything there.
I have a new item.
Sure, what's your
I would like us to, not now, not till we get five of us, a big discussion on the nec program in this school, because I think that has changed a lot since we started it. So I would just like to have a discussion about it with five of us, and see if we're going the same direction we thought we were going when we started that six or eight years ago.
Okay, so you just want to put that onto the agenda?
Go over Parking lot, I would like to bring it up and talk about it when there's five of us, because I have some questions.
Do you want
Couple in another month or two, I don't, it doesn't have to be next meeting. This is, we're starting school, and I don't want to do anything with it this year, but I think we
Oh, you really can't, so.
No, I know. But I would like us to discuss it for the future, because we're gonna be in budget season.
So, why don't we do that at the next meeting, because that will, so.
I was gonna ask you for my benefit, if you can make sure there's some questions, that way I can look them up.
I know what the questions are. We've had this discussion, we just have updates.
So, the next one is the school board timeline. We are in July, August, I mean. Plans for the NTA school board lunch, we talked about that. Update on summer maintenance facility renovations, we've gone that, we've done that. Actually, yeah, we've done that already. Our listed teachers workshops and committees established for coming year, we did that last meeting, right?
No, we talked about it, you'll have it at the next August meeting.
Update on expected enrollments, we'll have that by next meeting, and contacting you to start negotiations, which is the Paris this year, correct?
And I did email Beth Pudrow, and she said that typically they will send a letter once school is in session.
Okay, excellent.
And Beth is still the union president, but she won't be on the negotiation team.
Okay. Alright, and this is looking ahead to September, so we have a nice school board policy books, which have already been given to us. Review of board goals, annual parent notification release of directory information. Do we, do we still do those books? I know like three years ago, we used to, everybody got a book with everybody's address and telephone numbers, which I didn't like anyways, but we don't do them, of the students.
Of the students, yeah.
It was like a fundraiser or something, too. I think they had advertising in the book. We don't need it.
Yeah.
I think what, annual parent notification release of directory information
Is this updating
No, it's the FERPA statement in the handbook.
Okay.
Right, that you have in there. So you can check that off for September, because it's in the handbook.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the student directory.
Okay.
What it says is, we release the following information about kids, and that's in here.
That's it, okay.
That's in here.
But we do not give that, I know this is separate, that directory of all kids in schools with their address, and, okay. They did that like three, four years ago, and I was like, what are people doing?
It's public knowledge.
It is public knowledge, but you don't have to actually
Not for students.
Not for students.
No.
The only thing that's For me, I, I would check it with legal counsel, but for me, to create a directory of student name and addresses and distribute that seems rather invasive, if not by law, by ethics.
It's lawful, but we don't need
And plus phone numbers and
Yep.
They did it like four years, I remember, I was
Not too happy with it.
I wasn't on the school board at the time. Discuss budget preparation and budget development, which will start, okay. Alright, moving on, yes.
For October, October, can we add, we should have, that's when we're supposed to get a list of coaches for winter sports in October.
Did we already? No, we got the fall one in, back, back in June, yeah.
Yep, we'll post winter sports at the end of August.
So we'll have those in October.
No big deal, I saw it.
Alright, set future agenda items. What do we have so far?
Nec.
Yep.
List of workshop and committees established for the upcoming year, update on expended, expected enrollments, and then hopefully we'll have a letter from the unions, but probably not, but I'm gonna
Work session time, are we meeting, what time?
Six o'clock.
On Thursday.
On Thursday at night. We meeting there? Alright, so, next meeting is
We're gonna have to follow up on the Sorry, is that, you laughing at me?
No.
Laughing at me. You're also gonna have to make a decision about the thing we talked about in non-public.
Yes.
That's it.
Alright, so future meetings, August eighth, we have the Northwood Budget Committee meeting, Brian will be attending that, I'll try to make it as well. That's at the Town Hall. August sixteenth is a regular board meeting at six thirty PM, and then August twenty-seventh, we have a joint board meeting at the SAU office. And the first day of school is the twenty ninth?
Thirty.
For students, the thirtieth.
Thirty, yes, right.
For teachers, it's the twenty ninth, correct?
Alright. Any public comment, closing public comment? No? Alright, any board members want to speak?
I will. I just wanted to say I was here Sunday and was working on a pollinator garden in the back with my husband, and there were so many people here working on the front landscaping. It was amazing. There were so many kids and families, and then we just pitched and helped, because, I mean, we didn't know what was gonna be going on, so we were there anyways, and we had hand tools, so we put our kids to work. And they worked really, really hard, and it was really hot and humid, and I think it looks great, so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Great, thank you. Oh, there's one thing else. I was wondering, National Night Out for, it's like a community partnership with first responders is Tuesday. responders is Tuesday at 5:00 to 7:00 on August 7th. There's going to be a whole bunch of different things, free food provided by Hannafords, touch a truck, there's going to be a rad and dare demonstration, there's going to be popcorn machine, tons of different things. I was wondering if we could do an all-call on that, on like, maybe like Monday night or something like that, or two, or Monday before you guys leave?
Sure is.
It's going to be at Co-Brown by Smith Hall. It's going to be like in the U and by Smith Hall. I don't know if that's something we could use it for, if it's actually.
A public announcement, and you're not doing anything political.
Nope.
It can be.
No, actually, I would think it's still. Community partnership.
Well, one of the challenges that you might have with using your one-call system right now?
Who's on it?
Being updated.
Yeah.
So you may still have ninth graders in there, you still may have kids that moved in there, so I don't know, I mean, that would really be up to, but that's just a caution that I have, is that it's summertime and you're updating that, so.
Anything on the sign-out front?
Maybe we could do that.
My only concern is that if we do one for an outside group, then we set a precedent for other outside, I have received requests from other groups before to use the one-call system, and I've declined it, so that's just something to think about.